We are calling to order the November sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. The first item on the agenda is an application for a special permanent variance of Lamar Central Outdoor LLC. Karen, if you please read the notice of public hearing into the record.
Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, six to eight Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGollum Hearing Room of the Southborough Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, on Wednesday, November sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven P. M. to consider the application of Lamar Central Outdoor LLC for a use variance and special permit to allow construction of a digital billboard at six to eight Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. Exceeding the allowed area and height for signs and allowing front and back illumination, including twenty-four hour operation, the petitioner is seeking relief pursuant to section one seventy-four dash eleven, two B. Billboards and similar signs are specifically prohibited. In section one seventy-four eleven, two C, flashing, moving, changing messages and animated signs are prohibited. In section one seventy-four dash eleven, two D, no signs shall be illuminated between ten P. M. and six A. M. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the Office of the Building Department at the Townhouse during normal business hours. Andrew Ardennington, Chairman.
And I've designated Mr. Walker an alternate member to sit on this matter because Mr. Bartolini had recused himself from this matter. As I think the applicant is aware, what Karen just read is the notice of public hearing that we submitted to the Metro West Daily News back in October. But we found out in early Monday that this actually was never printed in the Metro West Daily News, which is a problem because we now have a defective notice of the public hearing, even though I think that there's probably not a single person who would have attended if they had seen that. They would have probably seen it in the Internet anyway. I think we have no choice but to continue this hearing. And Mr. Brizone has filled out a request for continuance, extension of a hearing process. And at this point, it's really just about picking a date. At that time, we will take this up. I know we've had three meetings in November. We've had a good practice before. We try to just have one meeting a month, so I would like to get that going again. So I have in mind meeting on December fourteenth, Wednesday, December fourteenth. Does that date work with everyone?
Works for me.
As far as I know, I mean, because of the mistake, I'm willing to meet any time.
Okay.
That, you know, so if it needs to, you know, I don't know what time is needed to procure, you know, the advertising issue, but I'm willing to meet any, you know, because of, I don't want to have the applicant delayed because, you know, because of a clerical error. So I'm agreeable to meet anytime.
So, given the timeframe that we need to do this, that December fourteenth would work. And then I've already started to arrange so that other matters could be heard on the fourteenth as well. We'd have a pretty meaty agenda for the fourteenth, and then we wouldn't meet on the twenty-first.
If that's agreeable to the applicant, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I had thrown the fourteenth out to Andrew previously. I did find out afterwards, I was supposed to be in Connecticut that night, but I'll come here instead, so I'll be closer to home. And, yeah, no, actually, it was last Friday when I started to collect everything to get it into Karen. We realized that it hadn't been published. We didn't get the notice from the newspaper. And when we called them, they told us they had never gotten a request. But since then, we've realized that they did get a request from you guys. So, no, I spoke to the applicant, and they are fine with the fourteenth, the date of the fourteenth. And in fact, I think they've continued the planning board hearing on it until the twelfth, which is the Monday before.
And so where do you, I'm sorry, could you say that again, what date you've got with the planning board now?
I believe she had checked with everybody except for one member, the twelfth.
Okay.
Which would give them a day or two to get their report into you.
So then, are you agreeable to extending the hearing until December fourteenth? And then the deadline for the board to make a decision until January fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
That works.
Does that work for everyone?
Yep.
So I guess we need a motion?
I motion to continue this until our meeting on December fourteenth.
And that they'll postpone our decision date until January fifteenth?
Do you want to give it another try there?
Do we need to say the time for the?
Sure.
And the time, well, to continue on what I was saying, at seven o'clock P. M., the time that the board will shall reach a decision on the matter will shall extend to January fifteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Second break. So you wanted to do seven P. M., not six thirty?
Seven or seven thirty usually, but.
Seven o'clock is fine with me.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Okay.
Just one other matter, Mr. Denny. As you're aware, there was a, considered an error, not really an error because the body of the decision on the prior hearing that we had moved the effective filing date of that to August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen. It wasn't called out in your decision. So in order to protect my client's interest, I had to appeal that. Since then, Town Council has prepared a memo and a finding, a point of law, I guess, for you guys to stand by, that he felt that your decision, even as it was written, embodied that, although it didn't come out and say it. I'd just like to be sure that, and you guys all sat on it, that you've all read it and you concur with that and that you'll have that appended to the file so that if there's ever a question, we've got backup in Town Council's opinion relative to it.
I don't have an objection to that.
Not at all.
No objection.
Okay. Thank you, then I can dismiss the suit.
Okay, good.
Lovely.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay.
Work here, Jeff. See you guys later.
Well done, Jeff. No, but we're probably going to be done pretty quickly, so. Okay, the next item on the agenda that I had put is approval of Fussin' O'Neil On-Call Engineering Consulting Services. Did everyone get the email that Karen sent? Basically, what I think we should do is, I've been asked to sign this, I don't really understand why. Karen reached out to the developer, who ultimately, the developer would be being asked to pay these fees. It's just four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to review additional plans. I don't know at this point what additional plans would really need to be reviewed. So I'm not inclined to take any action on this, but I'd be curious to hear what other people have to say.
I'll make a comment on it, that we had decided months ago that when the development is finished with conservation, if there's any changes, then it would have to go through and be redone and filed with Fussin' O'Neil to relook at it again. And the developer agreed that when that stage came, that he would pay for it. But presently, they have not been approved by conservation yet, and there's been an extension for another month or so over for some reason. So, and what, you know, we have. So the thing is, I think what we should do is be considerate of continuing until the January meeting, which Andrew's going to bring up the discussion on the January. We have the January meeting on Park Central for the appeal.
We don't have anything on the agenda right now.
But that's something.
Well, what I'm, what we were thinking of doing is for this December fourteenth meeting on Park Central, the appeal from the planning board's denial of site plan review. We have to, by statute, begin that hearing by January first, I think it is.
So you're recommending to begin the process on the fourteenth?
Yes. And then, you know, we may then continue it into January. The Park Central hearings have all tended to take multiple hearings. So, and then at that point, we pick a January date.
But what is going to be on the fourteenth?
The appeal from the planning board's denial of site plan review.
Park Central's appeal?
Park Central's appeal of the planning board's denial of site plan review.
So then we continue this issue until then also, so it'll be discussed with them that night.
How does everyone else feel? Paul, I know you sat on this and are very familiar with it.
Yeah, could you, you lost me a little bit on your position on the matter.
Sure. Do you have this?
Not in front of me.
Want to take a look at it? So, this came to Karen.
Correct.
Okay, and it's a request for authorization for Fussin' O'Neil to do what looks like a minor amount of work. It was signed by Fussin' O'Neil in September. It talks about a start date of September first, and we just got it in November seventh. My understanding is that this project is basically in kind of a state of limbo because there's an appeal. And this would be to authorize Fussin' O'Neil to, for the town, respond to questions from the applicant, review additional plans. I don't know that there's any real need to do that. I'm not aware of any new plans that have been prepared.
Why does the ZBA need to provide that approval? That doesn't, that just seems like an odd appeal to us.
What do you mean?
Because we sat on the forty-B component. We're the authority on the forty-B component of it. And so that component is still going to need to be, I mean, there's going to be, you know, since, I mean, there's going to, there's still going to be modifications to the plan. And so Fussin' O'Neil will be reviewing those modifications on our behalf to make sure everything is in order. And then I guess during the process, and again, I don't know at the moment is if there's a process currently between the developers, engineer, and Fussin' O'Neil, but if there is, I would feel more comfortable having the, for the town's benefit to make sure that, you know, that, you know, that everything is being done and kept in order.
We haven't been notified of anything being done yet.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know of anything being done, but.
It won't be done until conservation is done. And if conservation, no changes, nothing will be done. If there are changes, then they've already agreed that they will pay us then to have it reviewed by Fussin' O'Neil for the zoning board.
Right, so I guess what I'm, I guess I'm still confused then. So we just, I mean, this matter is just being said that we're okay with retaining Fussin' O'Neil's services to review the plans on the town's behalf.
But one issue is that ultimately, right, the developer pays for this work, which is done on behalf of the town.
Correct.
And the developer is saying now that they don't think there's any need for this work to be done. And I don't see any need for the work to be done right now either. So I don't see in the harm of just continuing.
That's the part I'm missing here.
So the developer's already conferred that there's nothing going on? Because if you read it, if you read it, it actually looks like they're cleaning up some paperwork. They already did this stuff.
I shared this with the conservation and the planning board, and conservation responded that this work was for them.
Okay, all right.
She's out of the office, I just said, okay. And, yeah, and I got a verbal from the developer that he was not interested at this time in supporting that or approving that since it's an appeal.
Okay, well, I mean, the fact that the Conservation Commission wants it to go forward, I think, changes it a little bit. I was thinking that the ZBA didn't really have any need to do it. But do you know if the Conservation Commission needs this between now and December fourteenth?
No, she's on vacation. She just responded to my email, so I don't know. I don't know if services have already been done because the date, I think, says September through maybe the end of the year.
Okay, so.
But I did email the Fussin' O'Neil and said, you know, there's no authorization here.
The issue with that is that it's not our responsibility. They, Planning Board and Conservation, if they use Fussin' O'Neil on any project, they have to request to get the payment from the developer. We do it for our issue, not for theirs. That's a standard process.
Okay, so I didn't understand that because I thought anything that pertained to that particular project ran through me. So I didn't understand, I don't understand that conservation does their own, which is fine.
Well, but it sounds like the developer isn't wanting to pay for it. So the question is, if Conservation Commission needs it and the developer's not paying for it, does it fall back on us to approve it and?
Conservation hasn't requested it from the developer, from what that letter is.
Well, one thing we could do is we could reach out to the Conservation Commission and find out more information.
Yeah. Okay.
Does that sound good?
That sounds good. And I guess we would also want to reach out to the planning board to see if they've done anything also that's going to require Fussin' O'Neil's services.
That sounds good to me.
I disagree. I think the proper way of doing it is to send it in front of Town Council and have Mr. Cepriano agree whether they're responsible or we are on their own issue. Because it is a major legal issue that's always been done the other way. So I think if Town Council then stated that, then when we meet on the fourteenth, then we can re-discuss it again at that time. And Council will state, because the way it's been properly done is, conservation has to do it their own and the planning board has to do it on their own, and we've never been involved in that.
I disagree with you there, Lee. I think it's just as easy for us to have a conversation with our fellow board members to just talk it through. I don't think we have to get Town Council involved. I think this is a simple conversation between boards of, is this really needed? What's the situation? Let us know so that we can all work as a town. You know, we don't have to.
Yeah, I agree that getting advice from Town Council's fine, but I agree with Craig that we should have a conversation directly with the planning board and conservation as necessary.
I also agree with Craig.
But I guess to Lee's point, it might be worth, I guess, speaking with Town Council also. So three things to talk to.
Okay.
Because the only reason I'm saying it is the fact that there is a regulation on the books of that. That's why I'm saying to go to Council. Otherwise, I wouldn't have a problem talking to boards either. But there is a rule and regulation stating each board is responsible for any financing from a developer. That's why I'm, you know, saying what I stated.
Just to put it in context, though, we're talking about, it's only forty-six hundred dollars.
Forty-two.
Forty-two hundred dollars. It's not, this is not in the grand scheme of things a big deal.
So maybe this was forwarded to me in error. Maybe the other boards got copies, you know, so I don't know.
I think we can just leave it, I'm not sure we even need to vote on this. I just was bringing the, making the board aware of this. And we can just, and we can just put it on the agenda for our next meeting. And between now and then, I'll reach out to the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, to see what their position is on this.
Okay.
And if after those conversations you're still not clear, then talk to Aldo.
Well, I mean, I don't think there's any harm in talking to Aldo also.
Right, yeah, there's not. I don't see any harm in talking to Aldo about it either.
I think it's fine to just look for his advice.
Okay, all right. So the next item that we put on the agenda was amendments to the ZBA rules and regulations. And the context of this was in June, the town clerk had come to us and said he wanted each of the boards to tell him what were their currently, what regulations they had that were currently in effect. I looked into this, I found we have a set of rules and regulations from two thousand seven that back when Mr. Giorlandino was the chairman, there was a meeting. Aldo helped guide them, and they passed these regulations. And I've reviewed them, those to me look like the correct set of regulations. And I think there are some tweaks that probably need to be made to them. But as I looked at it, I did see some legal issues that, before we talk about this now, I would like to talk to Aldo about that as well, so.
I think that would be excellent, and I think, being the attorney in the group, that that would, you know, you would be pretty well qualified to have that conversation.
Okay.
I'd also like to make a recommendation that prior to doing it with Town Council, that you sit down and talk to the building inspector. He is the zoning officer, and he's been in charge of all these rules and regulations. So he would be able to help you maybe go through them and discuss them, and then go to Aldo after that.
Okay.
Because, you know, he is in charge, and there's been, in the last three or four years, some things that we changed, which you've been involved in, that we've done, which Mark Robidoux has approved and done, and then they were already called, sent to the clerk's office that way too. But still, I think that, you know, to help you, that would be the way to go, Andrew, is to go through with Mark first, and then, you know, take it to Aldo and then bring it back to us.
I'm fine with that.
But, I mean, if you're looking for, like, our approval of you, or, I mean, I approve of you because I think, again, being an attorney, you would be well qualified to have those conversations.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Should we?
I'm happy to do it with you.
Okay.
Just so that there's a couple sets of eyes on it.
Absolutely. And I'm thinking that we would.
I don't have a problem with that either.
We would have some discussions, then we have a proposal to present to the board that we'd review.
Well, the thing to do is, in that case, is take and talk to the building inspector and set him up and bring another meeting with all of us and discuss it, if there's any, you know? And you talk, you talk about it and find out what there are. But I don't think there are any major issues.
I don't think there are either, but I, when I started, I started to spend about an hour on this, and I started to have some questions that I would like Aldo's input on. So I think, is there a motion to permit Craig and I to discuss with Town Council proposed revisions to the ZBA rules and regulations?
And can we include the building inspector also with that?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to permit you two to speak with Town Council and the building inspector, building commissioner, in regards to the regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
No, I want to have a discussion first. Is the issue is, what are you going to speak with them about?
Well, I think we've already had a motion, which has been seconded. So we're going to vote on the motion. So I think we already have discussed this. And we will talk to the building inspector.
Right, but you're just going to discuss the issues that we have. You're not discussing any changes. You're discussing what we have for regulations. And then it has to come back in front of the board to discuss changes.
To be clear, there would be no changes to these rules and regulations before coming to the board first.
Okay, that's no problem, I agree then.
That's a review of the regulations.
So I think you were the.
You're just doing a review, that's all, no problem.
So do you vote yes?
Yes, I do.
All right, who made the motion, though?
I think I did.
Paul, and who seconded?
It was a while ago, I don't remember.
David.
All in favor? Aye.
Yeah, I have no problem with that at all, that way.
Okay, and then do, is it all right with everyone if we meet on December fourteenth for our next meeting? We would have, this would be a pretty significant agenda. We'd have the appeal, the Park Central appeal of the site plan review. We wouldn't necessarily have to complete it that night. The billboard, and then also, you might have seen the newspaper, that the medical marijuana dispensary has applied for a variance to build a fence. So we would put that on the agenda as well.
Okay. I guess that's all fine. I mean, I think we just agreed to have the continuation of the billboard, of the, you know, the Turnpike Road, that should be at seven o'clock then.
I hadn't settled on an order, and I would be fine with taking them first, given that they.
Needed to be continued.
Yeah, we already voted on it at seven.
Right, so we voted on it at seven, but I think it's fair because we had to continue that anyways. And as I assume the Park Central matter might, might take up some time.
Make that last, and make the marijuana second at eight o'clock, seven thirty.
That would, sounds good to me, and then.
And then make the Park Central at eight o'clock.
Okay.
Because you do it that way, and then, you know, if it goes later, you just can keep continuing it. But it's better doing it that way than doing it the other way, and then end up sitting here for an extra half hour with nothing in front of us if something happened, that got changed like tonight happened, you know?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yeah. So another thing which I think we can talk about under other business before the board is we, I've been asked by the building commissioner to support a pretty substantial increase in the budget for the zoning board of appeals for this.
We have a budget?
We do. And Karen, I believe we have a separate budget for the building department and the zoning board of appeals, right? So the reason for this is that, as you know, over the last two years, we've had some very controversial applications, and it's just generated a lot of work for Karen and Mark to the point where it's an excessive amount of work, and it's not fair for Karen to have to handle both the, both the everyday building permits and also helping us with getting us prepared for our meetings. So the idea that, just let me finish. The, Mark's idea is to basically have two separate positions. One person under the building department, who would handle the day-to-day building permits, and then Karen's position would be a thirty-five-hour-a-week position, and she would be the secretary for the ZBA.
Okay.
Does that sound?
Is that something we decide on, or is that something that the board of selectmen?
We make the recommendation.
We make a recommendation, so we make a recommendation, and then that gets presented to the?
To the advisory and the selectmen, and then it goes into the warrant and the town.
So the town meeting in April, we would start this process now.
Yeah, but the issue is, and I don't think the board realizes it, and Karen can tell me exactly if I forget, she's only allowed so many hours a week. What is it, Karen?
Yeah, so currently, I work thirty-seven hours a week, and then two hours a day is dedicated to the zoning board. And it's really been, I, I mean, I, people come into the office, the phone rings, I'm doing all electrical plumbing and gas, helping with the building, researching things, doing ZBA, constantly switching gears.
I've been by the office enough to turn the day to know what goes, I understand what goes on there.
So that's the breakdown right now, and I choose to work thirty-seven hours just because my day is fast and I'm just always going. So that's the breakdown now.
And three years ago, the budget was reduced by five thousand dollars by the committee that does it. And we need to get back to where we were and increase it more than that because of the fact that these two hours a day are not pleasantly enough for the board at all. And that's what Mark wants.
So we're just looking to support, is he just looking for support from the ZBA?
Yes, that's what he's looking, right? He's just looking for support from us.
He's just looking for support from us.
He's going forward and doing it.
And then I would, with the board's approval, I would write a letter to whoever needs to have a letter written to. Advisory Committee, Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, saying that we support this, and this is why.
Yeah, that's right. I think that's the way to go.
But see, that was. I'm certainly in favor of supporting that, so I don't know if that's something we're taking a vote on, or?
I think so. But Lee, do you have any other further comment on this before we take votes?
Oh, no, I think it's excellent because it's, I mean, it's, you know, because of the way it's planned and everything. And, you know, the limitation of two hours is ridiculous. It really has been.
You know, I think that would help, I think, help streamline some of the process. And if there's someone that's just, I guess, if I'm hearing this correctly, dedicated to servicing the goings-on of the ZBA, I think that would, I think that would certainly, that would certainly help a lot of the process. I think that would, I think that would certainly, I think that would certainly help, help a lot of the process.
The thing is that we had years ago, is we had a different person that was doing it. And what that did was, that did not keep the building inspector aware of what was going on with the zoning board because it wasn't the secretary for the building inspector. So the thing is to make sure that whoever we have for secretary is still working with the building inspector also. So she keeps them informed of what's going on. Because before, there was all kinds of issues because the building inspector didn't know what we were doing at meetings. And back then, we weren't videotaped or anything, there weren't, you know, we weren't on TV at all. So the building inspector couldn't go back and look at it. There's now Mark Purple, Mark Robidoux has the right to, now he looks in the, the thing to see it also.
Mm-huh.
So I think that, you know, his request, I think, is right to do for the board, I really do. So do you want?
So, want to make a motion? Yeah, I think it would be a motion to, uh, approve the budget, budget request um, made by the building inspector, building commissioner.
I make a motion that we agree to approve the building inspector's budget request for the zoning board.
Are, are we agreeing to it, or are we agreeing to endorse it?
I think we're agreeing to support it.
Agreeing to support it.
Right.
We, we, we don't get to decide.
That's what I'm saying, so we're agreeing to support it.
Yes.
Yes, I, I, I second the, that motion.
All those in favor? Okay, um, anyone else have any other items they want to talk about?
Just the adjournment.
Lee, anything else? Okay.
Did you, did you just set the times for those other two minutes?
I'll, I'll, I'll set them.
Oh, okay, we'll talk to all later.
But we will begin with the, um, special permit. Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Craig seconded. All those in favor?